My name is Greg Antrus. I'm the Vice President of the Democratic Party of Evanston. For those of you joining us here today, this is part of our interview process for the Democratic Party of Evanston endorsement. As you may remember, typically, we have all of our members join at the endorsement event. At the Unitarian Church, we sit in a big crowd and we get to hear from all the candidates for two or three minutes as they stand on stage and tell us about themselves. Obviously, we can't do that this year, so we're doing this as a video interview series. If you're not a member yet, you can join on our website either by becoming a dues-paying member or by volunteering with us at a couple of our events and getting your membership by volunteering. And for volunteer opportunities, you can reach out to us. We have some special elections coming up that I can get you hooked up with. So I'm joined here today by Gretchen Livingston, who is currently on the District 202 School Board and is running for reelection this term. So Gretchen, why don't you take a few minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Great, thanks Greg, and thanks to the Democratic Party of Evanston for going to all the effort to coordinate the multitude of interviews that you're doing this election season. And thank you in particular for including the school board, which hasn't always been included historically in Democratic Party of Evanston endorsement sessions. So I think it's terrific that you're doing that. So about myself, my name is Gretchen Livingston. I have now served, I'm seeking a fourth term on the District 202 School Board. I first ran in '09, so I've been around for some interesting times. As far as my personal background goes, I have two children now in their twenties who have been through District 65 schools. They attended Lincolnwood Elementary, Haven Middle School, and then of course ETHS. And now they are successfully launched and living independently, which is all that a parent could hope for, especially during these pandemic times. My own background is as an attorney. I'm comfortably retired from that profession, which gives me the privilege of having more time to devote to volunteer activities, including principally the school board service that I've been doing for these last several years. In addition to the school board, but relatedly, I also serve as the executive, or the Chair of the Executive Board for EdRed, which is our regional school advocacy organization. It's a group that average people don't know very much about. It's a sort of behind-the-scenes and small group staffed by three people. But it's our voice for public schools in Springfield, legislative issues impacting public schools. And I've been involved with EdRed since I joined the school board. All school districts that are members of EdRed have representatives. And I've been that representative over the years and then ultimately joined the executive board and became the Chair of the Executive Board. So that allows me to keep an eye on legislative matters arising in Springfield that impact schools. And there's been a lot of that lately, and I'm happy to talk about that as we move forward.
Thank you so much. So the first couple of questions that came from our members unsurprisingly ask about the coronavirus and the changes you've made to deal with that. So the first one, do you believe that accommodations provided to help students remote learn have been adequate? And what changes, if any, would you like to see made to that program?
I think that we are doing a good job with our remote learning. I think everybody who's living in Evanston recognizes that the high school has been all remote since the beginning of the pandemic. We have hopes that at some point during the semester, we may be able to return to some version of in-person learning. I think that's very much an open question. We actually have a board meeting on Monday, and we're going to be getting a further update from our administrative team on the state of things. I think the high school is actually extraordinarily well-positioned to do remote learning when the pandemic arrived. We were one of only a couple of districts in the entire state of Illinois who had actually filed a remote learning plan that is something that had been asked for legislatively in recent years, mostly anticipating things like snow days and ways to, you know, ensure less learning loss and more connection with our students for those kinds of circumstances. So we were sort of above and beyond other school districts in terms of how we were set up to do that. And in addition to that, we had already instituted a one-to-one program where all of our students have Chromebooks. So those two things combined allowed us to sort of skip past some of the just extraordinary administrative and logistic hurdles that a lot of other school districts faced. That doesn't, you know, answer the question, is this really what people want to be doing? I don't think it's what anybody wants to be doing. And I know that's the case for families, for our students, and for our parents. And it's definitely not the case for teachers, administrators, and I would say even for the school board. So, you know, we're always evaluating the conditions, always looking at changes in how COVID is impacting our community and how that relates to how we're going to be able to function at the school. I mean, there are a couple important things that we need to keep in mind, and it includes the fact that Black and Brown communities have been impacted by COVID in ways that are very different than our white communities. And that's just in terms of infection rates, hospitalization rates, and death rates. And that's something that we have to pay attention to in our high school. And then I think people forget, it's not as simple as just, you know, let's spread out the kids at the high school. You're a big building after all. You ought to be able to give everybody distance. It's just, it's not quite that simple. We've got a, you know, the school has been paying attention to things like the airflow in the building. We're a really old building, so we have to take into account that sort of thing. We've got to, because we're a high school where we have typically nine periods and one day with students moving between those periods, we have to figure out, well, how's that going to look? Because movement is not something that's helpful in a COVID environment. We've already gone to some sort of block scheduling for the online learning. But if we get back in school, we'd have to take that into account as well. And I think there's also a recognition that we don't want to be bouncing back and forth between remote and in-person learning, because you lose time that way, and you spend more time just dealing with the logistics and the administrative burden of things. So, you know, I think for anybody who hasn't seen it already, we've done a terrific job of communicating. You can go to our homepage on the ETHS website, see all the links. Our principal, our superintendent have been doing weekly town hall video chats. We do all the usual emails and social media kinds of information sharing. And that's where you can get the latest and greatest updates.
All right, thank you very much. So you had mentioned that you're going to be deciding perhaps this upcoming week, or at least you're going to have a meeting about it, a potential move to in-person or hybrid or something.
Just to correct you there, that's not a decision item for Monday. I just was pointing out that we have a board meeting on Monday where we will be talking about the latest updates.
Okay, sorry, I misheard.
I don't want anybody on the edge of their seat thinking there's a determination to be made on Monday about, you know, returning to in-person learning this week.
Okay, so that decision, whenever it may be made, what, you know, what criteria not only will you be using to make the decision, but in evaluating the process as it moves forward?
So the number one concern is safety. And you can see the details on kind of our frame of reference when you go to that COVID reopening plan information page on the website. And front and center is safety, and it's our staff, it's our student, it's our families at home. And of course, then that hinges on the recommendations that we're getting from the Illinois Department of Public Health, the Illinois State Board of Education, the Illinois Association of School Boards has provided information on this. We're checking in regularly with our attorneys on various issues that may arise there. And the community transmission rate factors into that sort of safety determination. And I think we also have to look at it through the lens of our own community and our diverse community. I mentioned earlier that Black and Brown communities are impacted much more heavily by COVID. And in recognition of that, we have to, you know, be extra cautious to ensure the safety of our students. So that's really front and center. We've already looked at, you know, the kinds of things that we have to do if we were to return in person. And, you know, there's some lead time related to getting set up for that, but that's been in the works. And our administrators have talked about that regularly at our board meetings.
So as you had mentioned, we've seen, you know, a disparity in the transmission rates and how COVID affects these communities. What will you be doing to make sure that, you know, like they're affected differently by coronavirus, that the outcomes and experience they have at school are not, there's not a disparity between, you know, the Black and Brown students or the economically disadvantaged and those who are from more privileged households?
Well, we already have those disparities, as I'm sure everybody recognizes. It's something we talk about all the time. Our number one goal is achievement of our students and eliminating the predictability of achievement based on race and other status. So, you know, the fear, and it's been talked about, written about extensively, is that COVID is just going to exacerbate all of those existing disparities. So we're extra careful right now about paying particular attention to our populations who struggle the most. And that is our Black and Brown students, black males in particular. We have a particular focus on achievements of black male students at the high school and ensuring that we don't lose ground there. And part of that relates to just making sure that we get our students showing up online to do their remote learning. And the good news is that we had a pretty good attendance rate at the beginning of the year from all of our students across the board. I mean, students across the country are seeing large numbers of students just sort of disappearing. We're not seeing quite that happen in ETHS, so that's the first hurdle. But it's still true that some students don't show up as much as we would like to see them. So we redeployed some of our staff to pay particular attention to the students who aren't showing up. Because, you know, you got to get everybody to the table if you're going to learn. And that's been a great way to sort of examine our resources, figure out how to better deploy people, and make sure that everybody's showing up to do the learning that has to happen. Sort of outside of our own building, there's a lot of talk at the legislative level about things like extending the school year or extending the school day. So just, this gives me an opportunity to talk a little bit about the work of EdRed. Just last week, the Legislative Black Caucus introduced the Omnibus Education Bill that's part of this veto session that's just started up, and it runs just into next week. And part of that Omnibus bill talks about adding days to the school year. As I'm sure everybody recognizes, there's an enormous cost to adding school days to the school year if you're to do that on a statewide basis, and they're talking about like 20 days. You know, that's multiple millions and billions ultimately in total. We can't fund schools as it is adequately, so I don't know where that's going to go as a practical matter. We'll see.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. So the last question that was on the subject of COVID deals with not just the physical health needs of the students returning potentially, but the mental health needs of students who, you know, have had to spend an entire school year at this point away from their friends. And what will the school district and what do you plan on doing to meet those needs?
It's a huge issue. I don't think it's something, I don't think we're waiting until the end of the pandemic to then figure out what those needs are. We've had to build in staffing to do check-ins with our students and our staff, for that matter, on their well-being. And fortunately, we have some terrific leaders in the school in that area. And we've been able to, even before the pandemic, sort of change some of our systems and procedures for dealing with that, adding additional staffing and so on. But during the pandemic, we've also restructured the school day a little bit so there's time during the week that's been set aside to address these sort of mental health issues as they arise and to provide outlets for our students and staff. So we have some programming that we've shared with families and with our staff to help them as well. But this is a really, really difficult issue, again, not just in our district, but across the country. And there's, you know, shortages of resources for families, you know, and this points up to problems in our healthcare system really about how we deal with mental health issues. So that's, it's an ongoing struggle. I don't claim that we have all the answers, but well-being is actually one of our four district goals, so it's something that the board is tuned into and will be paying close attention.
Thank you. So you had actually addressed it a little bit in some of your earlier answers, but a question did come in about equity and sort of, the question was, what have you done to center students who are historically, who are part of historically marginalized communities?
Great question, one that I'm not surprised to hear either. You know, I'm happy to say that I think ETHS has been a leader on issues of equity in the city of Evanston. I first was elected to the board in 2009. And the first big decision that we made when I joined the board in 2009 was to put all of our incoming students who are reading at grade level in the same freshman year humanities classes. So instead of having three or four different levels of students in high honors and mixed honors and regular and remedial kinds of courses, we changed the structure of how we place our freshman year students so that everybody comes in, if you're reading at grade level, into the same history and English courses. We then followed that decision with the same kind of approach in biology, which is the typical freshman science course. When we made that decision back in 2009, it was enormously controversial, attention-grabbing. I don't know how else to say it, but the decision was unanimous by the board. So at the end of the day, the board came together, voted unanimously on that. I'm actually the only person on our school board now who was around for that decision. And believe me, I remember it. But it was really exciting at the same time, and we've had huge successes since then. We're not done. We have a whole lot of work to do. We've, you know, in many ways, making those kinds of big decisions early on, we've captured the low-hanging fruit. Right now, we need to do more, and the more can be harder than what we've done before. So that issue particularly targeted our Black and Brown students, who were historically underrepresented in our honors courses and our AP-level courses. And it's just been really exciting to see that we now have increased numbers of Black and Brown students taking and succeeding in our honors and AP-level courses. But, you know, there's other groups at the high school too. We had some issues related to access of our transgender students to locker room facilities at high school a few years ago. And I'm very proud of the decision we made to create some updates to our policy to make more clear what we thought we were already doing, but we weren't as successfully as we should have been. And I think people are familiar with changes that we've made to the dress code, for example, which unfairly targeted young women in the high school. But the changes impact everybody, I think, in a positive way. And that's been another terrific change that even though the idea was it would benefit one population, the end result is that it benefits a really wide group of people.
So you had mentioned the incident a few years ago with the transgender student. What, so the changes were made after, you know, after that to address the issue. What are you doing to sort of foresee those future issues like that and address them before they become a problem?
That's a great question. The, we adopted in 2011 an equity statement. I was actually involved with drafting the equity statement along with Mary Wilkerson, who's no longer on the board. And we've tweaked the language a little bit, but that equity statement still stands. So that's the lens by which we look at changes to policy. In addition, we have four goals of the school board. They relate to achievement and well-being, financial stability, connection with the community. And within each of those goals, we have strategic, we have strategic plans or targets that use that equity lens as a focus. So every decision we make is meant to be made with an equity lens. Whether we're always successful or not, you know, I think that's open to question, and I think we're receptive to challenge, at least I am, and reminders that we may not be using the appropriate lens, that we need to look a little more closely or we need to revisit a decision we've made. You know, I think we can't stand on our laurels. I think the high school's been a leader in equity, a leader in this community. We were doing a lot of the training and the difficult conversations around equity before really the city was, even before District 65 was. And I think we can be proud of that, but it doesn't mean the work is done.
And then there was one final question, sort of in this vein, addressing the graduation rates of special education students and what can be done to help raise those?
Yeah, that's tricky, and it's a smaller subgroup. And it's a subgroup whose size changes from year to year. And within that group, there can be, you know, wide variation in the kinds of disability. So it is, it's difficult to look at those numbers year to year. But historically, they've not been where they should. And I know CASE, an organization in our community, has been very vocal about that. And I've certainly heard from them over the years, been in touch with them directly myself, and they've weighed in. I think the first thing really is to just pay attention and acknowledge the fact that those numbers are not what they should be. I mean, that's the first step. We've also had some changeover in our special ed department. And we have a relatively new special ed director now. And I think these are probably even more challenging times for families of special needs students during the pandemic who are doing, having to carry a burden within their homes. They never could have dreamed they would be carrying. So this is going to be difficult going forward, and I think probably we're going to need to spend some more time and attention on those issues.
Thank you. So I wanted to ask a question about the budget for 202, and not about any specific item, but about the process. Do you feel that the District 202 budget is something that's both accessible and transparent, not just for parents and students, but for the community at large? And how do you like to improve that?
Well, transparent, yeah. I mean, yeah, you can pull up the budget, you can look at it. I actually might have a copy of something sitting here. It's funny that you should bring this up. The budget itself is ridiculously long. It's hundreds of pages. It's a lot of numbers. You know, accounting in the school district world is fund-based, so it's a little different than what people may understand and there are rules about transferring funds from one fund to another fund that sometimes people don't appreciate or understand. The one thing, well, there's a couple of things I would say about ETHS. Number one, we do something, and I'm going to hold it up even though it'll probably be backwards. We do this ETHS Digest. It's our popular financial report. And this is award-winning. We've won awards for this sort of, I'm holding, this is the latest one, and it is 13 pages. So it's a lot shorter and a lot more accessible, I would say, than the many hundred-page document itself. And then, you know, reading that, and this is something, we used to send it out in the Roundtable when the Roundtable was still doing hard copy. Everything's online now, so this will be, if it's not there already, it will be accessible online. I would encourage people to take a look at it. And then there may be something there that catches their eye that they can then go chase down in the longer document, right? So that's something I think we've done to make things more accessible. I will say that whenever we have our budget hearings, and we did just do this not so long ago, nobody comes. And, you know, that's true about many things we talk about. We certainly comply with open meetings requirements. We post our meetings. We post the agendas there. And I appreciate that not everybody wants to come sit through a board meeting so that they can raise a point about the budget, but we welcome comments. I think we have had discussion as a board about how to better communicate our values-based approach to budgeting. I'm not, I think there's room for improvement there. I think we could do a better job. But this is a good starting point, and I would encourage people to take a look at that. And, you know, I'm also going to say that we have a balanced budget. We've had a balanced budget for the entire time I've been on the school board. We're AAA bond-rated. I mean, this is rare, and no guarantees going forward about how that's going to look. But the financial management of our district has been stellar, really. And the other thing I'm going to add about our finances is that we've had tremendous support from the ETHS Foundation. We work, I don't know if partnership is exactly the right word, but we coordinate with them so that when they're doing fundraising, we can speak directly with them about the needs of the district that really might not be appropriate to draw from our own taxpayer dollars, but would be better served if we can get some of our dedicated alumni to share in those expenses. So, you know, things like improving our sports fields and our entrances and things that might be seen as sort of extra. And the foundation has been able to do an incredible amount of work on those kinds of projects. We're lucky to have them.
Thank you. So the next question isn't about the school board, but about you. When you first joined the school board, what was your number one priority? And do you feel like that's a goal that you have achieved?
That's so funny. You're really testing my memory, and I didn't go back to my 2009 candidacy materials.
I answered that question of a 30-year incumbent older woman yesterday. You didn't have it the worst.
Well, here's what I'm going to say. I think anybody who says that I came in with a personal priority has got the job wrong. I mean, my priorities are the priorities of the district. I'm one of seven board members. I don't get to do things by myself. And I'm pretty sure that was my point of view back in 2009. We work well together as a board. We don't always agree on everything. We've had our ups and downs, and I've been on the board for long enough to see quite a bit of turnover over the years. But, you know, the number one job of the board is to come together to set the priorities for the district. And we've done that. We're still, we have a five-year strategic plan, I think, with the four goals that I've mentioned at other points during this interview, and those stand. I think, and I don't disagree I, I think, and I don't disagree, I, I think those are great priorities. They relate to student achievement, student well-being, the financial state of the district and our community connections. And without going into all the great details of those things, those, those are still our important goals. So, and I think, you know, as I think I've already covered during the course and the conversation, we've done better in some areas than others. And there's always room for improvement. And that's why I'm happy to run again. I think we still have work to do. I think we're generally getting that work done. And we've been ably led by Dr. Witherspoon. So I look forward to four more years.
Thank you. And for, for the last question, it's a, it's a two-parter. Which of the board's decisions would you say you most disagree with? And then which of the decisions of the board are you most proud to have been part of?
Well, I think that early decision that I already talked about relating to the changes in the freshman year. And I know that's an old decision, but it's, but it's a big one. And it's really driven all of our equity work going forward. So I, you know, I'll hang my hat on that one as the best. And in terms of disagreeing, wow, nothing springs to mind. I'm sure that I disagreed. You know, for example, well, I'll give you, this just popped into my mind because I haven't thought as deeply as perhaps I should have about it. Our board canceled our joint school board meeting with District 65 last spring. And then we had a second joint school board meeting scheduled for this fall. We canceled that. And there was obviously, the pandemic was going on. And in the spring, it was a transition point to a new superintendent who was obviously consumed with his preparation for the new job over at District 65. But, and, and, you know, maybe that was okay in the spring to cancel that meeting, but I think we should have had that joint meeting in the fall. I think there is no time like right now to be coming together to talking about, and talking with our colleagues on the joint, on the 65 board about what we can do to serve our students in Evanston together. So, and I, so I voted against that change in our calendar.
Well, thank you very much. So at the end of the interviews, I like to open it up. If any of our members have joined us, and I see that Carolyn has. So Carol, if you're willing, Gretchen, to stick around for a minute and take a question or two from Carolyn?
Of course.
Excellent. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Greg, and thank you, Gretchen. Thank you for taking my question. And thank you for your wonderful service over these numbers of years. My question actually has to do with what you were just referencing, the connection, the relationship, the communication between 202 and 65. Regardless of how we would assess the academic outcomes of 202, no doubt you and your fellow board members and everyone in the community would always like them to be even higher. So my question is, to what extent do you attribute our inability to meet our highest expectations in terms of academic outcomes in 202? To what extent do you attribute that to the input that you're receiving from D65? And, and if it's to a fair degree, then what are some of the remedies that you see, Gretchen, for enhancing the relationship and ensuring that the young people who come into ninth grade in 202 have what they need to be successful in high school?
Well, I'm glad you switched from input to young people because it is the young people, for sure. And I, I'm guessing that you may have read the Roundtable article that just came out about a board meeting that actually happened back in December, I think, where we talked a little bit about achievement of our students. And our administrators had some comments about students arriving from District 65 not reading at grade level. And those numbers have gone up by a fair amount. So what I can say to that is what I said at the board meeting, which is, that is a reason, it's a good sort of connection to where I ended the interview with Greg. That is a reason why we need to be doing joint board meetings with District 65. We have a joint literacy goal. One of, I would say that one of my proudest achievements, maybe this goes back to Greg's earlier question about what I'm most proud of. One of my proudest achievements from serving on the school board goes back to my tenure as board president for two years when Tracy Quadrakey was the board president over at District 65. And we increased the numbers of joint school board committee meetings so that we were meeting as a committee on a monthly basis. And that monthly collaboration then led to the first ever joint literacy goal of both of the school districts. And that in turn was directly related to the work of the collective impact effort in Evanston known as Cradle to Career. And I'm a participant in Cradle to Career, and I've been involved with that effort from the beginning on the Prepared for Adult Life Action Team, otherwise known as PAL. So all of that is tied together. And it, it pains me that, that we've let that slide. I recognize that we are in the middle of a pandemic, which are just unbelievably difficult times. Not so much for me, but for a lot of people. And, but we have to be able to multitask. And, and this is a time when we need to really double down on our efforts because we're going to be facing some learning loss by our students that are just going to pile on to the already historic discrepancies in achievement that we see. So, so I think we need to get back to some of the things that we were doing. And we need to hold ourselves accountable for the results of that kind of collaboration. And, and we just, we just haven't been doing it lately. And it's, I, I think it's okay that there's been a pause on it, but we need to get back to it.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So thank you so much, Gretchen, for joining us.
Sure.
And I just wanted to end the video with a reminder to anybody watching. If you're not a member of the Democratic Party of Evanston yet, you can join on our website. And then for the endorsement votes, that will begin on January 17th, and the ballots are due in by January 23rd. So once again, Gretchen, thank you so much for joining us today and have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Greg. Nice to see you.